Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and get started because we got a number of counselors joining us now. So I want to thank Counselor Allen, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Govan, Counselor Hirsch for joining us. Thank you Lindsey and TJ and we have guests Juan Latorre and Thomas Fortini here. But I just wanted to preface the meeting with saying this is more of an informational purpose meeting. Counselors have some questions, but we are on a tight, 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 tight timeframe. So at the end, if we have a couple of minutes left and our guests want to ask questions, we'll allow it. But if not, we gotta jump right off because I have another meeting right at 5:45. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So TJ, kick it off with the process. Counselors, did you all get the documents that Lindsey sent?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, okay, good. So we'll talk about the process selection, the criteria and things like that and the selection team. And then we'll go into the next item on the agenda.
Yep, so the process, as you know, we've had to build this from scratch as we kind of got the interim rule and ultimately the final rule on how to make sure that we develop processes that are fair and give us the ability to kind of move money to different entities with relative speed. Took a while to get it all up and running and posted up back in October. Took a little while to work out the kinks with the first round of awards, which we'll go through. Tom and I are always amending the process and trying to improve things as we get feedback. You know, we're trying to get staffed up, but generally the process is for one of the four RFPs that exists right now, which is household, seniors, small business and new business, five nonprofit. You know, they submit the application, the application, we do the intake. Now we notify the person that we've received the application. We go through, make sure it kind of checks the boxes that has all the criteria that we are looking for in the application for a quote-unquote completed application. Once we've identified the completed applications, they go to a review committee made up of two analysts and Brian Connors over in economic development. Those three people rank them advantageous, not advantageous or you know, need more information. And the ones that are complete get passed along or get rated. And once they get to the point where they're kind of passed with an advantageous, highly advantageous, they go to what's known as the ARPA Advisory Committee, which is basically made up of Tim Shan, Chase Wan, Gladys, myself, I believe, and the four. And then Marcus Williams. So there's five of us on that advisory committee. Tom Moore prepares a memo. So the ratings happen, they're blind ratings. So nobody knows who the entities are, who the people are. So that, all that information goes back to Tom Moore. And then he crafts like the memo saying, okay, this is for a small business located, you know, downtown for auto improvement. And then explains why it's ARPA eligible in those memos to educate the committee to then go ahead and make a recommendation. And within that, there's a box, you know, line that.
Which committee is that TJ? Does Tom Moore create the memo for?
The advisory committee, the one that.
So that's the you, Tim?
Yes, that's the one.
Okay.
Me, Tim, Gladys, Marcus and Chase. And so that group meets, you know, we listen to Tom explain the process, explain why the advantageous are highly advantageous. He goes through each of the, each of the RFPs and then says, okay, their request was for $300,000, but we only want to fund it $75,000. And we'll get into that piece of it. Or we went want to lower it. And then the committee kind of discusses and tries to determine, you know, what makes sense. So most of, most of the awards have been lowered. Some of it is because of scope, some of it is for them to come back to us, to kind of get up and running and come back to us. Some of it is, there's just an aspect of their request that we don't think is an eligible expense. So then that, the committee then makes the recommendation to the mayor and says, here, like in this case, here are the six small businesses and five nonprofits that have made it through the process for round two. Here are the amounts requested, here are the amounts recommended. And then the mayor, you know, says, that makes sense, we'll go with it. And then we notify the awardees, we call them and let them know that, what it is and how much. And then we sit down with them and schedule meetings, I believe they're all happening this week, with all the awardees saying, come on in, we'll give you the scope and the scope of the grant terms. And we've committed for small businesses that they will get 50% of their money upfront within 20 days of execution of the agreement. Then we can determine when the next 50% will be upon completion or if there's milestones that need to be hit. So that's generally the process. The first round was a little.
Oh, you said, hold on, I'm sorry. You said the nonprofits and businesses get 50% upfront?
So the nonprofits are going to be treated completely different in the sense that everyone's unique. Small businesses are going to be treated the same as, say you're getting 100 grand, you'll get 50 grand within 20 days of execution of the grant contract, and then you get 50 grand upon completion or if you have, if it's milestones you need to hit. Nonprofits, because each of them is different for whatever the reason they might be applying for, you know, it could be 50% upfront, it could be 100% upfront, it could be, you know, provide the service and then invoice, that really all depends for those. And that's what Tom and the team and I met on Wednesday to talk about was just to say, hey, I like the small business, I like the household getting it out to them quickly. Nonprofits, I think we need to figure out the best way to do it that's unique to their needs.
Okay, so we'll pause, see if the counselors have any questions.
Yeah, so that's the process. And then we'll move on to the other stuff that you requested.
Any questions on the process counselors?
I have just one question, Counselor Whitfield.
Sure.
TJ, what, and I don't know if your next agenda item pertains to this, so if it does, then we can, I can pull it off. But TJ, I know that the previously has been stated, the goal is really to reject essentially no one as long as the ask is within the scope of the funds.
Correct.
So have, how has that been going in terms of reaching out and trying to work through applications that might not, you know, be able to, ready to be funded immediately, but have that potential?
So yeah, that's a great question. I probably forgot to miss, I mentioned that part. So yeah, the intention on this is to have not be winners and losers. We want everyone to kind of figure the process out and get through it. And we have Chase Wan and Tom doing those meetings. We just hired a guy, a gentleman, starting on the 21st from Hartford to come do a lot of that. And we have a posted now for a project manager that we could get one or two out of, hopefully, if we're fortunate enough to get the pool of candidates that are all dedicated to helping with the applications and to make sure that all the paperwork, proper paperwork is, that we have it all. They meet probably with, you know, five entities, you know, any given day, up to five, I should say. I don't want to say so many, but they have back-to-back meetings and they spend a good hour plus going through what the needs would be. We have streamlined the application process to take away some of that owner's paperwork upfront that might intimidate folks from wanting to, you know, apply. And then we just say, okay, once we, once they get a pre-award or an award, we say, alright, now is what we need to satisfy the grant terms. So our goal with that unit is to really provide all that outreach and to make sure that we get someone that might be in the no pile into the yes pile.
Thank you.
So when they're no's, sorry Counselors, one moment. When they're no's, they're communicated that they're no's right away, like, or.
They're communicating, we reach out to them to say they're, they need a little bit of work and we're there to help provide the assistance. The issue that you're encountering, I believe, and I would say the rest of your colleagues are encountering, is the length of time in between communications. And that's just a staffing issue that we're working on now.
Yeah, like I had said to you previously, and I think I told Tom as well, like if we just set the expectations better, say we're gonna review the applications, review or assign them within six weeks. And then, so the expectation would be like, this is gonna take two to three months. It's not, you're not gonna have an answer in a week or two. It's not gonna be assigned for six weeks, so that'd give you a little bit of leeway. And then, you know.
Yeah, no, that's actually a fantastic idea that we could put that into motion as early as next week. So, because I think managing expectations is part of the problem is, you know, they may be a perfect application, we just haven't gotten to it yet and they're nervous, so.
And they don't understand that we are not staffed, like they don't know all the background details to what goes into the process and we're not staffed up yet and things like that. So just setting that expectation will be like wonderful for us. We'll appreciate it.
Yeah, no, that's definitely a key point to managing all this.
Yeah. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, thank you. TJ, can you help me understand when they're ranking? They rank, you said they rank them highly advantageous, advantageous and what else? Unresponsive. And so I guess, I guess my thing is if they're unresponsive, how do they even get to that committee? Right? Or if they're not highly advantageous, how do they even get to that committee?
So that's what the committee, the first level, so the intake will just make sure that they're completed applications. And that is just, that's not a ranking, that's just saying, okay, we ask for, you know, an impact statement. We ask for a plan of use, a budget or, you know, intended use and all that stuff. If they did that, no matter what it says, it goes to the ranking committee. The ranking committee then takes it and says, well, this has nothing to do with COVID, you know, so I'm gonna rule this unresponsive because it's not in response to COVID. Or it's unclear, its connection to COVID. That's a lot of the question we tend to get back from the ranking committee, that I'm not clear the link to COVID. And that's everything we've got, that's how it kind of gets there. So they could have, it could, it could be a terrible application that checks all the boxes that just wasn't thought through and then, then we go back and help them get there.
Okay, and then I guess for the, the highly advantageous and the advantageous, what, um, what does that, what does that say? What does that mean? What does that, what does that mean?
So, yeah, so say it's the nonprofit one and the nonprofit is suffering from lost revenue due to COVID and lost memberships or whatever. And they could show a real revenue loss that was not helped by any of the other federal programs that are out there because we're not allowed to do the double dipping and that they needed the assistance. Or small business, same thing, you know. I don't want to speak on specific ones, but there were some really well-written ones that, there's one, the, not if clothing is the right one, but the urban gear one. That was a very well-written one that did all the answers to all the questions ahead of time. They linked it very nicely to COVID. You know, they talked about what their planned intended use with the funds were. And those ones were, you know, easy to say yes to. And that's, so the ranking committee goes through and says, yeah, this is clear, it makes sense. The budget numbers make sense, the, what they're spending the number, the funds on makes sense. And this is an all-around highly advantageous proposal.
Is that it Counselor?
So are there ways in which we can get the advantageous, the highly advantageous? And then what is, what is sort of the impact? Do they get less money as a result? I'm sorry, what is the?
No, it's a great, it's a great question. We typically go back for, for better information, more information. So if they're like on borderline, say they have one response of the two advantageous and they seem like they got a really solid proposal, just needs some work, we'll go back to them and say, here you go. We'll work with you and get, and get you there.
Okay, and then how does that in turn translate to the money? That'll be my last question, I'm sure.
So the money, the money stuff, we can get to when we show the ones that we got to work to. And I can kind of show that as the next item on the agenda.
Sounds good, thank you.
So some of the questions that you have, we might be getting through, through the presentation. But Counselor Allen?
Say, Allen? Okay, thanks, broke up a little. So one question, I think, if you, if the person doesn't meet the requirement for COVID, what do you, what do you do with them? Do you send them, are there other places they can go for business assistance?
So if they're, if they don't meet, we don't think they meet the ARPA legislation parameters and, but they do have a serious need, we will, we will contact the appropriate departments. At least our intention is to contact the appropriate departments if there are other services available.
Would that be economic development?
Most likely it would be economic development or the housing department. Or, or wayfinders or somebody else that if we feel this isn't in our wheelhouse, but we know they can get services somewhere, we'll do our best to line up the services.
Okay, so what if, I'm talking specifically about a new business or something that maybe didn't exist? You know, it may be hard to prove that COVID was an effect, you know, that it was impacted by COVID. You'll send them to somewhere else where they might be able to.
Potentially, yeah, potentially we would say, okay, go talk to Tim Shan's team and see if there's another avenue for getting resources.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hurst?
Thought I was putting my hand down, sorry.
You put it back up, sorry. All right, thank you. Um, I wanted to go to the portion of the agenda because I really wanted to go over the budget and I wanted to go over the, the demographics of who's gotten the awards and that stuff. So can we pull up one of the two?
Yeah, with the, so I don't have an updated budget report that we, that we didn't have last time, that we showed you last. I don't have that one. Updated, so it didn't change significantly if at all since the last time we presented it. I will have that at the next one that we have.
All right, well, let's go.
Can everyone see this?
Yes.
So hopefully this answers kind of the big overarching questions that have come up since the last meeting. I think it was Counselor Hurst, I wanted to know kind of just the applications that we received to date and by, by, by awarding category. So as you can see, small businesses, we have 78, new businesses, we have 53, nonprofits, we have 30, households, we have 18, seniors only two, and we know that's an area that the council is concerned of as well. And Echo Dev, we just have one. So that's kind of what we can track for you, for everyone, every month. We can, I'll just update this report as things work through the process. And that's kind of, so I don't know if anyone has questions on that piece of it. The other part of the category, what we're looking for was the demographics and the amounts requested and the amounts awarded. So here, oh, sorry.
I got, I got a question, so this Counselor Govan.
No, feel free to interrupt, the questions might have me answer.
Well, I'm just looking at Devon Devon, he's the only one that got more than requested and is that an error or?
That's an error. Could be the other way around.
Oh, okay. All right, okay.
Well, now you got me thinking I might need to take a look and update this.
He can always use more if you want to send them half and half.
Yeah, that's, that actually, that actually should be reversed. And I don't want to get into the specifics of the, of the application and the deliberations of the committees, but he had a very strong application of where he's heading with his vision. And so, you know, this is something that we hope, once he kind of gets going a little bit more, we come back to us for the next phase, phase two, if you will, of what he's, what he's envisioning.
Okay, well, I know you don't want to get into the details, but I do specifically to the nonprofit ones. Because there's like, for example, most of the organizations that are known in the community like Forest Park, Basketball Hall of Fame, Junior Achievement, got what they requested. And then the other ones didn't, like if we look at more, they, they got a fraction of what was requested. And I just don't understand Forest Park Zoo Society getting $115,000, I don't understand. Basketball Hall of Fame getting $49,000. And I'll say that because I went back and I looked at the state ARPA fund allocations and Basketball Hall of Fame also just got $300,000 of state ARPA fund and they got money, I forgot what the term is called when they're, oh earmarked for regular state funds. I'm just wondering how come they keep getting exactly what they're requesting?
Oh, that one, that one I will definitely answer. Certainly, because that's not, there wasn't a lot, so back when the enshrinement came back to Springfield this year, the city committed to paying for all the COVID testing and all the COVID protocols to ensure that they stayed here in Springfield. They went ahead and did it. And then we were gonna do a contract using CARES money, but CARES money was kind of questionable with eligibility. So we had to have them go through this process to get access to the money we committed to them that they paid out for all the proto, all the testing and having a doctor on site and all the stuff that the NBA require.
To have the enshrinement here.
Correct, and that was the commitment was, alright, you're having it here, we want to keep that. We want to bring it back here permanently, hopefully we have and we will. But that was why that one is specific, that actually ties right up to an invoice or two that we, that we have, that we've received.
And that was before the state said that they were gonna handle the travel and tourism industry. We had made those, we had, knew that we were gonna be reimbursing them for those costs before the state said that, otherwise we would have said go to the state, like we.
Okay, and then the next one that I wanted to talk about, and I don't know if you have the answers, but do you know where Junior Achievement even, where they service, are they partnering with the schools? Or, because I know where they're located, they're located in Tower Square, but I never see them in the community before like I did when I was younger and a part of Junior Achievement. I just don't see them anymore. Do you know where they're offering?
That's a great question. You know, that is not something I looked at during our due diligence phase of kind of all the services rendered. And I'm actually not even recalling 100% of their application at the moment. I just know it was a strong application and was recommended by the committee to fund them at the full amount based upon what their scope of work was gonna be. So I could get, I could get a better sense.
I just want to know where they're doing their workout, work at, because it says serve minority communities, but where? Like where are they serving them at? What's their numbers? What's their probably strong application and data? Someone can write something great, but if the data's not showing that they're really serving this target market or population, then we need to look at that closely too, so.
I know they run the, they just ran the Stock Market Challenge, which, you know, students from all over the place participate in the Stock Market Challenge. I used to be on the board of Junior Achievement, I am not involved in it now, but I just saw something on Facebook or something about the Stock Market Challenge and I believe students from Putnam and Central or something had participated. I just saw it in the last day or two.
Junior Achievement of Western Mass, so they service all of Western Mass, right? Not just Springfield?
Right, yes, yes, but, yes, they do. I don't know how much they're doing in the outlying areas, but that's the point. And they serve college students and high school students, at least in the Stock Market Challenge, which was held at Cedars recently, not sure when. And that, I don't know if they're doing the curriculum in the schools like they used to. I used to teach at Homer Street and stuff. I don't know if they're doing that as much, but I didn't see the application. But that's, I know they, that's what I know about their recent work.
Okay, all right, Counselor Govan?
Hi there, thank you so much Counselor Whitfield. My question has to do with the amount of applications, it looks like you received to date. And right here, having that, you've received 78 small businesses, only awarded 11 and 30 nonprofit and you only awarded five. And then no new businesses were awarded, no households were awarded, no seniors. What's the deal with that?
Well, the biggest, the biggest deal is the staffing, well, two things. One is it's taken a while for us to get up and get all the contracts kind of in its format to be able to move quick, more quickly or quicker. But I put it in perspective is, you know, between the first round and the second round, we went from five to 11 additional ones. And now I want to say 12 to 15 are ready to go to the ranking committee now. So we're really ramping up, if I get another two staffers on board, we can really kind of go after the numbers and getting. I mean, I expect it to more or less keep doubling as we kind of get better at this. The second part is the new business one, a lot of them need work because they're just trying to work through their business model. And that's really what we're trying to work with them on. And again, that's more staffing and everything. Household and nonprofit, I think we have a few households that are ready to go that needed a little bit of work. And the two seniors, again, we just need to work with them and find out exactly what they're looking for.
Okay, and one more question on TJ. So if someone submitted an application, how would they follow up to make sure that it was received? Especially if they didn't get, you know, notification from you?
So they should, they should have. Our intake process is, we have one of our analysts, they get, they pick them up daily, they log it in, assign it a category and send a received email to the entity. And if the email, for whatever reason, bounces back because of whether it was illegible or we typed it in wrong, we would then follow up with a phone call just to let them know it's been received. Our error and our, our stuff that we didn't manage expectations by letting them know that this could be a longer process than they might be used to. And the more we send out award letters, the more people realize it's real. And they get anxious, well, I submitted one, you know, and I'm not through the process yet, are they gonna, are they gonna get to me? The answer is yes, I just need to get those positions on board.
Okay, because I know that an application was submitted in December and no notification was made as of yet.
So I, I'll go back and double check those because we, I think that's when we made the decision. It might have been the January meeting when we heard enough feedback that nobody was being notified. And that, so that's definitely something we're working to improve the communication.
Okay, okay, thank you so much TJ. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question on some of these awards, especially the, the largest example of this right now is the award to MORE. But I suspect you might see additional situations like this in the future depending on the amount requested. When the amount that's awarded is so much lower, are you having a conversation with these organizations about what they will utilize that lower amount for? Because for example, I mean, I'm familiar with MORE and their work and I, I know what their vision was for that request. And $25,000 really will not, will not, I know will not fund that vision. So I know that they would probably put it to very good use, but how are you at this time squaring that with these, with these organizations and applicants?
Oh, I believe the executive director reached, had met with Tom Moore today to talk exactly about this award and the next steps to get access to additional funding.
And that was gonna be what I was gonna ask was this, so can people, you mentioned, for example, this, this other applicant, you talked about a phased approach. So people can come back, you know, in the future?
I mean, this particular one, we know they're relatively new, we know they do good work. And, you know, Counselor Whitfield and I had a debate about it this morning as, you know, do you fund the whole thing? I hope everything goes well, do you start piecemealing it? And so at this point, the committee's comfort was to match the state's earmark and then go from there and see if we can continue growing the program. And then having her make some, another application to us when she shows us the good work she's doing.
I see what you're saying, well, I might have some thoughts on that too, we don't have to get into it right now.
No, we don't have to debate it now, I mean, and I understand the concept. I know what, I know what everyone is pushing back on and I appreciate it. And we're just trying to, you know, make the best decisions as we can and help. And then, but I do, I would never close the door on another phase or round.
I guess what I want to make sure of, I'm not necessarily. I guess what I want to make sure of, I'm I'm not necessarily, I mean, first of all, I mean, you know, we whenever the city is releasing funds. Um and this has nothing not related to more specifically, but anytime we are releasing funds to any organization. Uh or individual, and and we've talked a lot about this with CPA, about wanting to make sure that we have. Uh you know, the the protections in place that everything will be done correctly. But what I don't want to see is a situation where there's a strong proposal. And everybody believes in the vision of the proposal, but we want to see uh them get started. And then, you know, in the future, somehow the funding is not there. So I don't know if that means put the funding aside and then. Uh you know, work out an arrangement for it to be dispersed with certain benchmarks or something like that. But I just want to make sure that if people are coming forward with really strong proposals, that, you know, this community is going to benefit. Uh from it and that we're putting that in place. I'm sure there are some proposals that may come forward where it really is just too much. The request is too big. And it doesn't match what is in line, and we have to reduce it. But if we feel like, hey, just using them as an example. You're at two seventy-five. We believe in the two seventy-five vision. We just need you to help us get here with these benchmarks. I don't want us to run out of money. Uh and be in a position where we can't support the two seventy-five vision.
That makes sense, and I'm happy to discuss. Uh further and in more detail, if there's other approaches to it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. I think that's a great idea, actually, because um I was going to touch on. Um Moore's application too, because I I've been in constant communication with her, and I know exactly what she needs the funding for. And twenty-five. Thousand doesn't even touch the surface, even with a deposit of what she's trying to do. And so. Um she did talk to Attorney Moore today, and it was like, you gotta spend this and meet these benchmarks. But if I spend this, then. I'm not going to have enough for my goals still. So I don't really um see how. That's helping her get to where she wants to be. This is a need in the community. Um especially in the black and brown community. Um it's kind of like a safe house she's trying to get going and um. She spent this twenty-five thousand. Now she's twenty-five thousand short. What she put in the benchmark for the earmark. That she got from the state was for something completely different. It was for vehicles and um salary and wages. It wasn't for what this two seventy-five is meant for. So. I think that this application needs a little bit more discussion on how we can help um get. Her and other applicants to where they really need to be. Um because twenty-five thousand, I mean, it's not even, you know. Close to half of what.
I'm happy to have that conversation. I'm happy. I mean, I'll follow up with with Attorney Moore about his conversations today. And if there are are other ways to kind of look at this. Uh maybe it's just a step in the processes before we announce anything. We sit down with them and say, here's where the committee's at. And you know, can you convince? Can you give me enough information to get to get the committee to a higher number?
That might be great, especially before it's announced.
So this is kind of why um I think I was kind of alluding to, especially the um. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach, and certainly for a nonprofit. Um, you know, because I I I have not had the conversation with where her vision is. Uh directly. Uh I know what I read in the application, and I know um, you know, those areas. And I can, you know, when you get an earmark from the Commonwealth, it just says for um. This program in the city of Springfield doesn't say what it goes for. So having had those dialogue, having had that dialogue. Maybe we can change our our approach.
Yeah, that'd be good, because I I called the person who earmarked it, and that's how I know, because, yeah. You know, due diligence. Um Counselor Allen.
Uh yeah, just uh I I'm on uh my computer, and I looked up Junior Achievement of Western Mass. Uh they do offer programs. They they have a part of their website that refers to where their offices, where their services are. And they have Springfield. In Springfield, they list twenty-two organizations that they do service at. I believe I counted right, eighteen are schools. Ballyett, Chestnut, Friedman, Commerce, Stormin', Homer, Doug and Kylie, et cetera. And then there's a few others that are, you know, um viability is one of them. So there's twenty-two Springfield organizations. That are listed on their website.
That's great to know, because when I went through them, I went through a community-based organization. It wasn't in the schools at that time, so it's good to know that they're in the schools, because I loved Junior Achievement. Uh yeah, I invented the um squeegee window wash cleaner before it came out. Um our team did. But we didn't make money off of it. Somebody else patented and made their money. But that's what our project was.
All right, I'm gonna thank you. Thank you for that.
Uh thank you, um uh Madam Chair. Um question. The, did the Moores of the world. Receive an advantageous or a highly advantageous?
Oh, I don't.
And I guess if they.
I don't recall.
So 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 I'm so I think it's important for us to identify. Whether these individuals received advantageous or highly advantageous. And then what was the connection between that score and what they received? Uh especially if it was less than what they asked for. Because if they received the highly advantageous, it would seem to me that unless there were some limits, they should have received. You know, more, right? Otherwise, it should have been. It seems to me like it should have been kicked back and said, we need more, or we need to do better. Uh and and then I think the other thing that is important, especially as we rank these advantageous and highly advantageous. You know, I I might think about making it. Um making it so that those individuals actually know who these organizations are. I I I think in order for us to be purposeful in terms of what we do, what we do. We we need to know who we're giving it to. Um and if we think it's an organization that can do more. Um, you know, or that that that, you know, would would be, you know, that that could do more for our community. Then we need to work to get them the highly advantageous, so that they can get what it is that they need. Otherwise, the same organizations who have structures in place to complete these applications. Uh grant writers, et cetera, um are going to benefit. And a lot of times. You know, those are not the organizations that have been disproportionately impacted. Of course, they'll be able to show that they are. You know, I mean, I look at the zoo, and when you compare the zoos camp versus the Y's camp. I mean, and you look at the makeup of the kids that they serve, it's drastically different. And my kids have gone to both. And so maybe we need to start encouraging folks to apply. Who we don't necessarily see on the list, so we can be purposeful and equitable about how we distribute this money. Um so just just my thoughts as you work through. I know it's not easy. I know it's going to be difficult. But I really think since we're moving at such a slow rate now, we we ought to take the time to figure it out.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm ha- happy to have that conversation, happy to keep, you know. I can say this is more than most communities are doing at this stage, so I'd like to leave. I don't want, I do not want to turn. A very positive thing into a negative thing, but I do recognize. Uh when we get staffed up, where we want to go to be more intentional. I get that.
Yeah, I um we're the city of firsts. We're supposed to be the trailblazers and in the leaders. We're doing what we're supposed to be doing. We'll let them follow us once we perfected it.
I had a conversation with the state yesterday, which uh left me a little uh frustrated, because they're so far behind us that. I would like to do a lot of partnerships between us and the state and nonprofits and other organizations who do big stuff. They're just not ready for it, so.
Now, I'm going to piggyback a little bit TJ off of some of the comments that Counselor Hurst made. One is he said we should know who these organizations are, because my first question was, who is World is Our Classroom, Inc. Like. I don't think I've ever heard of World is Our Classroom, Inc. And I don't know what community they serve. I just didn't know who they were.
I don't remember the entire application off the top of my head, but they they work out of the Springfield Public Schools. And they had a program that they wanted to bring to the school system. And I don't remember the details, but I certainly can get. Um access to the details and the summaries. I probably should have looked at them prior to this, but.
Because when I look at World is Our Classroom, Inc., and not knowing who they are, knowing who Moore is. And the target population that they're trying to reach, which is, you know that I'm big on it, to eliminate gun violence, to help. Um families of homicide victims and things like that. And I'm like, okay, I don't know World of Our Classroom, Inc. I know Moore. I know the target population. I know the huge need in the community. But they only got twenty-five thousand in the World is Our Classroom, Inc. Don't know them at all. Never heard of them. Never heard of them. Now, I live in Springfield, Born and Raised. I'm very involved. Never heard of World is Our Classroom, Inc. one time. And they got a hundred thousand dollars to me. That was worrisome. That was bothersome. I even reached out to some of my colleagues, like, you ever heard of World is Our Classroom, Inc.? Let me reach out to the school committee. They didn't know who World is Our Classroom, Inc. Now, if I seen that name in the Step parent villages, I'll be like, okay, I know them. I heard them. They're around there in the community. They're definitely um affecting disproportionately impacted um community. I I I'm not saying that World is Our Classroom, Inc. Is it? I just don't know who they are. Never seen them. Never been to a city council meeting, nothing. So. That kind of bothered me as it relates to what Moore got and what World is Our Classroom, Inc. got. I I was a little concerned about that.
So. We think it's important that, at least up until we make the determinations on the amount, that it stays blind. But I'm happy to have a conversation that once it's known, if there's another step in the process. Um that we could have a further conversation with uh each of the awardees or the. Uh organizations before an award, just to kind of get more information. I have no problem just looking.
And we should invite them to some meetings, to some city council meetings, because we need to know who they are, what they're really doing. Um because we can't just be given um the ARPA money to organizations that really is not affecting disproportionately impacted people. Um primarily, I'm not saying all the money needs to go to that, because everyone's affected, but. Um primarily, why we got the amount that we got is because of this particular segment of the population.
Oh, yeah, so I mean. Che, Tom and I, Chase Wong Tom and I have a ton of conversations about being very intentional with the money. And trying to get it out uh and been and trying to ensure that it's, you know, equitable. And it it gets, and in the laws, it's still clear that they want a lot of the funds to go to the disproportionately impacted. Uh populations. And we're uh we've had tons of conversations on how do we do that? How do we make it, you know? Uh and really kind of address what the law intended to intended us to do. So. We have those conversations weekly on how to how to better do it.
All right. Thank you, TJ. Um Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great points. Uh just had a question TJ on. Uh and both have been discussed in this committee, marketing and technical assistance. Where are we at?
So technical assistance, we have two fronts that we're working on. The first front is getting staffed up in Chase Wong's uh area where. He's compliance and technical assistance. So it'll be him and three staffers as of now. And then the other way we wanted, we're talking about going about it, are finding organizations that are in the community. That can get out and actually either get trained directly by us, that can help uh educate and uh help write. Uh I heard there's one individual, whether it's true or not, I'm not sure. It's anecdotally, she she helped significantly help write twenty to twenty-five. Um. Applications on behalf of the North End. And I haven't checked that facts on it, but if that's the case, that that is awesome, you know? And, you know, I know there's other organizations out there that can do it, and that I. The more Che and I talked about it just just this morning, the more organizations that can help. That are in the community, that people know and trust, the better off, because even my my four employees with Che and the three others. It'll be great, but they're not going to reach the the volume of people that are going to need it.
I I think it's essential, and 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 we know there's people out there already doing it. Um, you know, me and Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Hurst, where we had a workshop that that uh an individual is already running. And, you know, the if there's anything about Springfield, you know, the 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 people will get together and make it happen, but. They should be compensated and they should be able to receive some training directly from us. I think what we're probably seeing is. Folks who are uh experienced in grant writing, or, you know, just with technical applications. Using their sort of background knowledge to support people that they're connected with or who seek them out, as as folks that are well-known for that. But. If it can be structured, I think that's good. Um and I also think that there's organizations that are just going to reach segments of the population that the city is not going to reach, no matter how much marketing you put out there, right? Um whether that's uh because of a language barrier, whether that's because of the lack of relationship or distrust. Um and that's really where we're trying to get, you know, this to go. So. Uh so I'm hoping that you guys can present, you know, a plan for that in the near future and and sooner rather than later. Um I I didn't hear you address the marketing piece. There'd been.
So the marketing, right now, um. We have a contract with Western Mass News to do some baseline marketing. But and I'm going to butcher it. I probably should come prepared better with the marketing stuff that they're that we're going to be doing. But they have the ability to reach groups and subgroups and different populations and. And the whole presentation we went through with them, it all sounded wonderful. Um we bought the whole um. You know, packet if you will, package if you will, and it. Does a lot of stuff related to social media and getting Facebook and getting to the communities we want to get to.
That's what they're ad, you're saying Western Mass News, but you're talking about their advertising side.
I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking about their marketing side of the house.
So we're not talking about just commercials on channel forty.
No, 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 no. That's just one piece.
I appreciate Western Mass News and Channel Forty, but that's not going to do it. It's got to be.
You definitely like the nice mayor commercial that's out, but um we need more.
I have not seen that, but.
Oh, you haven't seen it? Oh, yeah, I just happened to turn on the news at twelve, eleven-thirty or something, and that's what popped up for me.
See, I I stream it. I stream it.
Sleep good now.
Okay, well, I'd like to take a look at that. Uh I'd like to take a look at the details on that TJ, if you can.
Trying the commercial.
I know it. Uh next time, next meeting. Uh Counselor Whitfield, if you could add that to the agenda next meeting, I think it's an important conversation.
Uh marketing piece?
Yeah, the marketing and how are we getting out to the community we want we want to get out to.
Because I I I'm not, I don't watch all the, I don't watch live television. Um but but I'm on social media. All the time, and I haven't seen any of it yet.
I haven't seen anything either. We're on social media.
Let's put it this way, I think we just entered in a contract with them like officially like a week ago.
Okay, okay.
That's seven days of lost time TJ.
I got like, I got seven months of lost time.
But I would like like to see it. I would like to see it. Um I would like to see it swiftly uh in the online sector, because I think people, people need to, people need to. People who are not necessarily um used to seeing this need to see it. So that's, thank you.
And um to piggyback off of that really quickly, before we go to Counselor Allen, um. We got to market other places. That's not going to work. Western Mass.
Oh, no, no, that's our only plan.
Okay, because we, I I want to see some marketing in the Latino community, the African-American, black community. Um we have free radio stations that your staff may need to tap into.
We've actually, we've been in touch with all with 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 all of them. We've worked with all of them. Um working with the radio stations. We're working, you know, we're trying to um make inroads there. We're just trying to figure out the best way is that. They just do an announcement, do we do we do a spot with, you know, explaining what it is? Like, we've we've been looking at all of it and.
Why would Western Mass News be the first avenue if we're trying to market to um the disproportionately impacted demographics?
Well, because they're the largest and the quickest splash we could get that could do. And when I could present what they're, what what we're doing, what they're doing with us. I'll show you that stuff. But it's not the only the only approach. Um and I don't remember all the radio stations we've reached out to, but. It's been um, you know, all the different ones that have served the different communities. We've we've uh published in, I don't know, El Playbola, La Playbola, whatever that one is, through the Republican. We published in the Republican. We've published in Business West, you know, we're.
Those are all the white, mostly white folks um gravitate to. If you said I pub- published in. Um Point of View, Metro Records, I call WTCC, um the. Elsa and that type of stuff, I would be like, oh, okay.
WTCC, we're working with Bomba Radio. So we're working on all that. It's not.
NPR, like, let's get, a lot of us listen to them and, you know.
Hey, Counselor, I I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I I just on that same point, TJ, I guess I was confused with your last statement. I thought you were saying that you had contracted with Western Mass's. Mass News's advertising side to put advertising out in different areas. You're, are you saying?
That's definitely, that's definitely a part of what a piece of what they're doing.
Because what I feel like you need is a, I mean, Counselor Whitfield's correct, you need a, you need like a marketing consultant who will do everything. Like, I feel like this seems, it seems kind of piecemeal. Aren't there people that we can?
I have no problem looking at that, because I can tell you this is way out of my realm of expertise.
Well, exact, I mean, this is different than anything that's been done. I I'm going to step back, because I've talked a lot, but that that's that's what I'm wondering, is there's got to be. Con- consultants that specialize in culturally competent marketing. Across spectrums. That's because you want it consistent, you know, you want what people are hearing on the radio, seeing on social media. And reading in the newspaper to all be the same, you know, that's key. So that, that, that's what I'm hoping we can get to.
And then the final comment I want to make as it relates to Counselor Letterman's comments to you. We have consultants that's working for free in the community, I think I said this last, and I want to put all personal. Feelings aside and do the right thing for the community. And so. If we can contract with these folks that's already doing the work and make them feel valued, they will continue to do it. And I think that we have to value the talent that we have in our communities and who people feel most comfortable with. And so we can't really keep. Running the government on how we feel and personalities and things like that. We gotta do what's right. So I hope we can make an effort to do that too.
I mean, if you could send, if send me the contact, I don't know.
One is on here, but I'll send you some others. I'll send you some others that I have. Some work for MLK, like, there's quite a few people out here doing the work, not getting paid for it, but they're getting. Tired. So, you know. I'm gonna go to Counselor Allen, Counselor Hurst, and I'm gonna have to end the meeting, because I do gotta jump off. But I wanted Counselor Allen, Counselor Hurst to get their final thoughts in.
Thank you. I just looked up the World is Our Classroom. There are five oh one C three. On Bridge Street, they've been around since two thousand and three. They have supposedly ten employees, but let me read you their mission. World is Our Classroom is a pollution abatement and control service in Springfield, Mass, whose mission. Is to teach students and teachers how science and math relates in a real-world environment. Classes are held at Bondi's Island, City of Springfield Wastewater Treatment Plan, five-hour workshop, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what they are.
Wait, wastewater plant, what? Say that one more time.
It's a, it's a science and math organization to teach students and they heal, they hold some classes at Bondi's Island. Our wastewater treatment plant, plant, five-hour workshop teaches students how science and math relates to the real world. And there's more. I don't want to read it.
Where are they out of though? Where are they out of?
Bridge Street, downtown Springfield.
Okay. Counselor Govan put some information in the chat to call them, but I'm not calling them. I might send them an email to call me when they're available, but. Thank you for that information. I love that you're our research guru right now on this. You keep that up. Maybe we need to over, put some more compensation.
Yeah, I just would say, as it relates to the advertising, that I I think we're doing this a bit backwards TJ. And so I I find it hard to believe that we've already invested monies. In organizations that are not specifically targeted to minority communities. Who we know have been disproportionately impacted. So to me, that's problematic and and that's. You know, it it seems to go, it seems to be counterintuitive to what it is we're trying to do. So I don't understand how. How we continuously get it wrong. It should have started with communities of color first. Or media outlets that address communities of color, and then we should have worked backwards from there. So how we get that right, I'll leave it up to you. I think enough has been made of it. The other thing that I just wanted to comment on is how do we plan these seniors? In terms of upping their application as well as the households. I mean, I just, it just seems to me like so many more people in the city of Springfield have been impacted. I don't know if we've changed the application to make it easier as of yet, or, you know, maybe we can come up with sort of a. You know, sort of a blueprint application for folks to model their applications off of. I I don't know, but that just. That seems to me to be extremely, extremely low in terms of numbers.
I don't disagree with you. The numbers are low, and again, it's staffing and getting folks. Out of the community to help, you know, do the technical assistance that we've been talking about. So. We have streamlined the application, we have heard you and streamlined the application. If there's other ways to do maybe a model application, or, I mean, I'm open for anything that will will achieve the same goals. That everyone on this call has.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen it, so I'll look at it.
Yeah, they have, they uploaded the new applications. I, when I talked to Tom, he told me and I went and looked. But we do have some ideas, TJ, I told you about that, we'll talk to you offline about reaching those populations. The application was just so cumbersome, they will look at it and be like, forget it, I'm not doing this, so hopefully that'll help. I know it's five forty-five, but I have one more question about technical assistance. There's some folks that reached out. About technical assistance to actually get help with the applications and they got no responses. And it's something I forgot to mention, but they haven't gotten any response from Che, anybody on his team, like, at least they're getting emails from. Tom when they received the application, but it's nothing, it's silence. So what are we gonna do to address that?
Just, I wasn't aware of that. I mean, that, I don't like when there's not a response back, that they're looking for those questions to get. Answered or trainings or technical assistance. Make me aware of it.
One thing he can do, if he, if he gets a list of all the folks that want this assistance and figure out what categories they work in. He could do one workshop or a series of workshops for those folks that's asking for this help and kind of like move them along. But I know he's hiring and things like that.
That's a fantastic idea. I have no problem. I mean, there, there are things that we're exploring now that the new ARPA final rule makes it easier. And there, you know, so maybe it makes sense to have a presentation on the final rule and all the great changes that came from. The interim rule, because they did a lot to streamline neighborhoods and targeting neighborhoods and. You know, all these things that we can do and there's. The determinations of automatically being considered adversely impacted, so you're not submitting nearly as much information. There's. Things that we're just pouring through in the, in that final application or the final rule that has it, so.
Is that something that can be presented next meeting, like the updates or the changes?
Sure.
That happened with the final rule?
Sure, because I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, I was pleasantly surprised when we got the final rule of how much, like, more flexibility it gave us.
Yeah, because that'd be helpful for.
Another reason why, and I don't want to go on, but another reason why this one. Was so, it's so slow and hard to get going and and get off the ground the way we wanted to, is the rules are so vague. That my, my fiduciary responsibility is to make sure that any money going out, they're not gonna come back and say. That was misspent, you need to give it back to us. And, you know, and that's, that's why we had to be deliberate. But now, the final rule, we may be able to get a lot more creative. Based upon the final rule and say, okay, we're gonna go into this direct neighborhood, these five streets, whatever it may be, these eight streets. And we're gonna now go through and see if household assistance. You know, senior assistance, whatever it may be, whatever category it may be, and just do, create an application for the entire neighborhood or whatever. I mean, that's the stuff we're talking about. Now, when we get there, hopefully that'd be the easiest, say, okay. We're designated these five streets or this neighborhood or that neighborhood, and all these people are gonna get this and here's why.
That'd be great.
And that's the stuff Tim Sheen and I, Tom Moore and I, and Che are talking about now.
Well, sun is better than nothing. People will appreciate, especially with these tax bills going up, but that's another meeting, isn't it TJ?
I thought I was gonna get out of that one.
We're gonna have another meeting on tax bills, right, Thomas? And you're gonna be able to talk? And we're, and we're, we're gonna get those bills out, we're gonna get some, some help out to the people that need it most. And we're gonna work on it for next time, so be on the lookout for that meeting, because you know it's coming up. I'm gonna meet.
Actually, I'm busy that night. I don't know if that's gonna be.
Wait, look at you, Lindsay. Looking good over there.
Thank you.
Y'all know I gotta go, because I do have another meeting. I think this was very helpful. I appreciate it. I appreciate Counselor for sending his. Questions ahead of time, and I appreciate Counselor Allen for being this research guru tonight. I need you to play that role every time. We're on the meetings. Thank counselors. Counselor Letterman, you have some great cultural competency. Information that we definitely, definitely gotta utilize. We need to make sure that this, this thing is happening. So I appreciate every single one of y'all tonight and everyone that joined us. Thank you, Juan. Thank you, Tiffany. Thank you, Thomas. You'll be able to talk next time. We're just in a rush today. Thank you. Thank you, TJ. Thank you, Lindsay.